And welcome to the October 25th, 2012 Longview City Council meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by our friend Dr. Glenn Stone, who is a senior pastor of Mobley Baptist Church. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you very much for shining upon us with your favor to grant us another day to breathe the air that you have created for our benefit. Father, I thank you also for the fact in the matter that you have not only created us to enjoy this earth, but to enjoy you. And so, Father, I recognize that while you are the source of all life, I pray also, God, that you would be the sustainer of our life in this evening. And Father, I thank you also in your sovereign care that you have planted me in this incredible part of the country, in East Texas, to call my home for my family. And Father, while we're grateful for those, I also recognize that I carry responsibility. And so, Father, I pray tonight specifically for those in leadership, certainly our mayor, and God, each city worker and leader, Father, that each of us would recognize that to whom much is given, much is required. And so, Father, in your sovereign care, while you've planted us here, you've also given us a task. And we want to recognize the authority that you've given to us, but also, Father, to act kindly in the name of Jesus Christ and caring for those, especially for those who can't care for themselves. And so, Father, in every decision that's made tonight, I pray that it is your will that is accomplished, just as much as your will is accomplished in heaven. And Father, I thank you for my city and community leaders. Father, thank you for the privilege of living in a community that cares for me and for my family, and for the safety and the future of my children. And so, Father, I lift them up to you as my friends and my civil leaders and community leaders. Father, thank you again for your ultimate care for us. And God, I thank you for this great country. And I pray your will will be done in the upcoming election. Father, we trust that as much as our lives are in your hands, the country's lives is in your hands. And so, Father, with peace, I can look forward to the next couple of weeks, even while my emotions may not. And so, God, I thank you today that you're in control. And so, I give you the rights to my life as much as we give you the rights to our community. We honor you. We want to serve you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dr. Stone. Citizen comment. First card, Brandon Johnson.
Good evening. I bring you greetings, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, everyone in attendance here. I am Brandon Johnson with Longview NAACP. It saddens me that I must stand before you again in this particular capacity. We came before this council about a month ago to raise the issue of a lack of diversity on the LeadCo board. At the following meeting, Mr. Mayor, you proclaimed October as Diversity Month. And I'm going to quote, "Whereas the city of Longview is an organization that draws its strength from the diverse community it serves, we strive to create opportunities for all people to reach their fullest potential. But before the ink dried and the echoes could reverberate back, that statement was recanted and the opportunity, the first opportunity to diversify the LeadCo board was not taken." We are here today because we're unclear about two things. First thing, Mr. Frost, we briefly discussed before this, you were for diversity, then you completely rejected it. Why did you change your mind? Number two, many of us here in this audience serve on various boards and commissions. We know the boards and commissions' application process, and we see that process advertised and on the website. Is this the same process to become a board member of LeadCo? And I leave it with you.
Good question. Okay, Vic Verma. Thank you, Brandon.
Are we going to answer those questions?
At due time.
Okay.
Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. I'm here to express my dismay with the Longview City Council for ignoring the decision of the City Appointments Committee to ask to add Andre Mayo to the LeadCo board. What makes this particularly galling is this was an abrupt flip-flop within 72 hours of the original announcement by the Appointment Committee. So, my question is, what happened? We were told at the last meeting that the process needed to be followed. Well, how was the process not followed? Yes, LeadCo has, makes recommendations, but the City Appointments Committee is not obligated to accept those recommendations. It would be my hope that the process does not involve the City Council blindly accepting anything that LeadCo or any other relative entity approves. When Councilman Frost apologizes for doubting LeadCo, it makes one consider whose interests are being served. The city of Longview provides money to LeadCo. Shouldn't the city have the authority to oversee LeadCo accordingly? It certainly should not be offering apologies except to those who feel betrayed by the City Council's decision. It should be noted that those of us who are advocating for increased diversity on the LeadCo board are not asking for miracles. We do expect progress, even on an incremental basis. We thought that we had made some incremental progress two weeks ago, and we feel like we have had the rug pulled out from underneath us. I do want to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to Councilwoman Kasia Williams for her leadership in working towards the appointment of Andre Mayo to the LeadCo board and for listening seriously to the concerns of the community. I would also like to thank Councilman Gary Smith and Councilman Richard Manley for their votes on this, in favor of Ms. Mayo. As they say, talk is cheap, but votes are real action. So, we really appreciate that. And it's greatly appreciated and really matters. I remain very disappointed, however, that the remainder of the Longview City Council did not support those efforts and stop them. We expect and demand better, and we will be watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verma. You know, every citizen of the city of Longview, taxpayers of the city of Longview are afforded the opportunity to come before us and speak. And I think we've been very gracious even that we sit here and we allow people that don't even live in the city or the community to come in, you know, and talk to us about city of Longview business. So, we, I think we've been very fair. I was not at the meeting that Mr. Johnson spoke at. Had I been at this meeting, I would have been very clear on the process of LeadCo. Every member of this council is very clear on the process of the appointees to the LeadCo board. Any one of us, and we have, can offer a name or a person that we'd like to see appointed to the board based on their capabilities of serving. That's probably the most important board that we have in the city. And it's not a place for politics. This morning, I attended a meeting with a company from Germany that's looking to relocate or put a manufacturing plant in the United States, and we're on a very short list. And that board deserves to have good, qualified candidates, okay, that understand, you know, business, et cetera, to be able to offer their expertise, especially in negotiations like this, okay? So, the process is, is that LeadCo board has always vetted their own candidates, okay, most of the time that are supplied by us, by this council, and by themselves, okay? And when they vet and go through and invite people to be on the board, because typically, when it gets to the City Council, they've already done the process, just like a couple of council members do for us on other boards and commission. But on the LeadCo board, they have a process of vetting candidates to be on that board, and they did that. So, what happened on this situation, okay? If Ms. Williams wanted to put Andrea Mayo, who's a very good friend of mine I have spoken to, since this, back on the board, okay, after Ms. Mayo had asked to be removed from the board a couple of years ago, that would have been fine. But that process should have happened before and during the time that candidates would be vetted. And that didn't happen, okay? It was brought here, and I think became a political football. So, now what happens? So, the board's made a recommendation, okay, and they've recommended a man, Ed Baynos. I think the misunderstanding was that he was moving away from town, which was not true. Man has a 12-month severance package. He's been at every meeting. He has served at every meeting, had perfect attendance, has an incredible business background and corporate background as well. So, we were going to ask that board, that is a non-paid board, a group of volunteers, to now go back and pull the rug out of Mr. Baynos so we could put someone else on the board. And I understand the diversity. But we don't play politics on that board, and we shouldn't. Process is, if we have names of candidates to be put on that board, then let's bring them. We have a whole year to do that. And we have opportunities to where there's going to be board members leaving because they term out, board members coming up. And when I say we've been diverse in that board, just go back and look at the past membership, including the women that have served, because I very much particularly believe women are a minority, too. And go back and look at who's been on the board that information's public record. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to consent agenda. Okay, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda council would like to move for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll go to action items. Action item A, consider resolution authorizing the directing the city manager or the city manager's designee to negotiate, execute documents for the receipt expenditure of grant funding from the Tax Department Transportation. Ms. Laura Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Willard. This is to request approval to submit an application to TechDOT for transportation enhancement funding to construct Paul Borman Trail Phase III. This shows the city's master trail plan that has been adopted for several years. And if you see the little squiggly red cloud, there we go. That's the section we're talking about for this particular project. Our proposal addresses the section from Highway 80 to Spur 63, which is an estimated 3,850 feet. This next slide, this slide shows a bit more detail, and then the final slides show just some views of the trail system, proposed trail system, I'm sorry. If approved tonight, we will submit an application for $3,688,023.50. If TechDOT selects this project for funding, 80% or $2,950,418.80 would be provided by the grant, and the city would pay 20% of the construction cost. Additionally, the city would be 100% responsible for all the design and engineering. So, the total cost to the city would be $1,355,784.70. Now, these are all estimates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Mrs. Sidney?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hill, thank you very much. Would you go back to the, just a minute ago, showing the proposed trail in the Town Lake area? Or that, the one that showed the greenery there? Okay. The, excuse me, the gray area you've got drawn, is that the proposed trail there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In the past, this area's had, I don't like to use the word flooding, but it's had flooding in the area, you know, due to heavy rains and such as that. How are we going to work with that with the trail down, looks like in this position here, down pretty close to the bottom of the creek and going underneath the bridge? Is this going to be, I'd start out by saying, I hope at least the people would have enough sense not to be walking down the trail when it's raining very hard.
Well, you don't want to wash in the water.
Yes.
Can we ask, I'm sorry, can we bring Keith over or up to speak?
I'm sure he'd love to.
So, you can kind of explain how we ended up with that property?
Yes, that's what, yeah.
Okay.
We, the people are very sensible to stay off the other portion of the trail when it floods. So, I trust our citizens.
Well, this one will be, but anyway, concerned as much with washout, you know, what we would do to control the washout when this, because this area rises all the way up to the banks, I'd say every year or so. And that's my concern, the washout. And if maybe Keith could give us some more explanation on that. And since this is my district, we've had, over the years, we've had several areas in here where the water has got up right to the edge on both sides.
It becomes a canoeing trail then, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Flatwater kayak.
Multifaceted.
More water kayak.
This is just what it would look like if we replaced the bridge at McCann Road with the going under. So, you can see pretty clearly that the opening for the trail and the flow line of the creek is the same. So, you're right. It's going to flood. It's going to get underwater when it rains heavily, just like the other Paul Borman Trail along Grace Creek does. We're going to have to armor it with some riprap and things. This is just kind of an artist rendition through Photoshop. It's not showing, however. There's going to be a chain link fence along the trail on the creek side of it through our process of acquiring the property of Town Lake Village. That's a requirement.
Now, the fence would be, give us a little better situation.
On the creek side of the.
It'd be between the creek and the path.
That's correct. That's correct. Town Lake Village, when they donated the property to the city for maintenance issues, they were having a hard time. It was privately owned at that time, and you can imagine the maintenance costs they were having. So, gave the property to the city with the understanding that we could build a trail there, but we had to fence the trail off of their property, in other words.
Yeah, that, and Sidney, if you remember, that was their actual lake.
Yes.
And there was, a lot of work has been done on that drainage way since the city actually acquired it. And Keith, on the new bridge, it looks like we're putting even, going to redo the flow channels through the bridge.
Right, right.
Whereas before, it was backing up on the other side of McCann Road.
Right. It's a strange.
But it's still going to flood.
Yeah, the top photograph there is the box cover. That's the existing. And actually, underneath the box covers is a 24-inch RCP that lets everyday flow go underneath the box covers. Reinforced concrete pipe, I'm sorry. There's a pipe underneath the box covers. It's just two foot in diameter. That little bit of flow comes through all the time, the everyday flow is what we're looking for.
All right, isn't there another pipe that runs parallel to the road that is above the surface a couple of feet?
Sure, sure.
Or what would you do with that?
They'll all be tied in the riprap to the.
To what?
To the riprap, to the concrete structure of the bridge.
Well, I was thinking there was a flow pipe. Maybe they carried water or sewer or something.
Right, right, yeah. Those are just, there's a sewer line that crosses there, an aerial crossing.
Yeah, that you can see from the bridge now.
It'll have to stay, yeah. We can't put a, lower it. But there's some other gas utilities there that.
Or what, you say you cannot lower the sewer line?
Can't lower sewer line.
So, what are you going to do with the sewer line?
It's just going to stay there.
You going to run into it when you're going down the path?
I hope not. We'll have to do something. But we're going to have to either make the trail go under it. I don't think, I think at that, at that, you can barely see it there. We may have to relate some of it, but it's gravity. So, I mean, we've got to, this is just preliminary. They're just asking for money right now.
All right. Okay.
We'll work on it.
All right.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hill. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
Ms. Hill, first of all, thank you for putting this together as part of your Park's master plan. You and I have been communicating about this prior to council meeting. I have a couple of constituents who are here tonight that I'd like, remember the question I asked you about future plans for the trail? And if you could share with them, I don't know if you have that map that shows kind of the next phase of where the trail is going south somewhat?
This is our master trail plan. It is on the city's website if people want to look at it more closely. We do have plans to take Paul Borman Trail all the way south down to the South Loop. So, you know, when you give me money, we will build.
Right. I said long-term. We had that discussion, okay?
Yes. But there are plans to take this trail all the way south, and there are plans to eventually connect it all the way with Cargill. So, this would be the trail system throughout the city. So, it's just this particular section. The grant call was issued in September. They want the applications within less than two months. And we already had this partially planned. So, we're hoping that will give us extra points in the competition.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions? Now, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Laura. Item B, a resolution authorizing city manager to enter and negotiate and execute the lease agreements. Mr. Chuck Ewing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. One of the long-term goals of council and the community is to create a multimodal center around the depot. And we believe this is the next step in doing so. What council's being asked to is consider a lease agreement with Greyhound Bus to bring them to this location. What you have before you is an aerial view of the location. This is where Longview Transit is currently located. We're proposing to locate Greyhound in this space and lease that space to them. They would enter here. You can see some of the turnarounds available. They were able to turn, that was one of the questions in the past is were they going to be able to turn their buses around and just do the fact that they're not allowed to back them up just for safety reasons? They did bring a bus in and found that they could maneuver in this area, and they were looking for another location. So, we were able to offer that. This is the front of the building. Longview Transit's here on the right, or the left, excuse me, with the, it's where we have our administrative offices and maintenance. And on the right is the space we're proposing to locate them. And there's a closer view of that. This is just a schematic of the property. They would locate in the front, approximately 2,300 square feet. This is, I believe, the restrooms will actually be further to the west here. The lease terms, looking at about a three-year lease, a one-year lease with two lease options. Again, 2,300, approximately square feet of space. Initial lease amount, 650 per month. We are offering them a rate below market, certainly to encourage them to be here. It would increase over the life of the lease agreement. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Chuck. So, that should pretty much, once we finish with the depot, that should pretty much complete the multimodal project.
We'd also like to add our transfer center. So, there are, so we'll bring Longview Transit there as well, and we'll have those three legs there, possibly taxi service and whatnot. So, we still have long-term goals to add some additional services there.
Okay.
But this is a step two.
Great. Good job, guys. Okay, item C, consider ordinance amending the FY 2012-2013 city budget. Mr. Ewing's.
This will actually pay for the renovations to the interior of that space. We're proposing to move $50,000 to the transit fund to fund those renovations.
Okay, questions on that item? Mr. Gary, go ahead.
Ms. Ewing, this says $50,000. What is the $50,000 in renovation? What is that going to include?
What we will renovate is, we'll add two restrooms, the seating area, and then in a counter space with some storage area. They do also do freight. And so, there will be an overhead door and provide all the interior renovations in the space and closing. Of course, we have to provide HVAC as well. So, there's some expenses there.
That diagram that you just had up there, is that pretty much the?
Yes, sir. I think the only difference is the restrooms would be on the lower part there, behind where the seating is.
Sean, could you go back to the front face of that particular transit? That's it right there. Now, Mr. Ewing, on this front area here, where are passengers going to unload for this particular bus? Are they going to unload right here at the end of the step? Because they're going to need something there for a handicap or.
Yes, sir. We are doing a Texas Accessibility Standards Review so that any parking spaces, handicap parking or accessibility issues will be addressed as part of the renovation.
Okay.
If you look to the right, there's a ramp on the right side. It's hard to see, but there is some accessibility. But any additional requirements would be met as part of this.
Yeah, right there with the bus.
It's a kind of a difficult step up. So, are we going to have, say, like a canvas walkway for the passengers? Thought about that?
We did not include in this estimate any passenger amenities such as seating or covers. That is something we felt, you know, the Greyhound should provide for their passengers since we're providing the space, so.
But I was thinking, in my mind, if we're going to be a lease giver of this particular building, if they put it in place, could they carry it with them if they decide to move somewhere else?
Certainly, you know, it depends on how they want to address that. If they want to relocate to another location, then it's their improvement, then they could certainly take that with them. One or the other, in the future, we will also be changing the entry, let me show you, as well. Let me go to that future plan here. This is the phase one for the master plan. And you'll notice that the buses will be hopefully entering through another location and come into the side of the building rather than the front. So, anything that would have to be improved, that would be improved now would have to be, you know, would have to be redone later. So, we're trying to keep those, make everything as temporary as possible so that when we do improve the building, once all of our grants come available, that we're not tearing anything out, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
When is the anticipated move-in date for Greyhound?
Their goal is after the first of the year. They do not want to go in before January. So, they want to get back through the holiday season. So, we hope into January 1st, part of February, they'll be there.
And again, kudos to you and the transit staff because I know that was very challenging initially.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item D, consider resolution authorizing the use of eminent domain to acquire parcel 2012-P-005, according to Nation. Mr. Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of the bond election from 2011. We're going to reconfigure and signalize this intersection of George Ritchie Road and Pine Tree Road. This is a five-legged intersection, if you will, with Graham Road. And actually, what we're going to do is remove this portion of Graham and make a turnaround. And then Graham is going to enter into Pine Tree Road at this point. And the reason for this action tonight is because this tract of land has some title issues, and we're unable to get a clear title. So, I've got a motion that I want to read. And before I do that, though, I'll ask for any questions you might have.
Do you read that, or do we read that?
I'd read it.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Unless you wouldn't read it, it's awful long, so.
No, sir.
I move that the city of Longview authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire certain property in the Henry Hathaway Survey Abstract 88, city of Longview, Greg County, Texas, said property being a parcel of land consisting of approximately 0.74 acres, parcel 2012-P-005, and being a portion of a tract of land which was called a 11.580 acres and conveyed from Herbert Williams and Herbert Williams Jr. to Herbert Williams III et al. By an instrument of record in clerk's file number 9719480, the Greg County Official Public Records, said 0.74 acre being more particularly described in Attachment A of the resolution before you tonight for the purpose of constructing signal improvements at the intersection of Pine Tree Road and George Ritchie Road.
Make that motion. Okay. Okay, excuse me. Go ahead. Ms. Manley, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is in my district, and I think most of us don't like the sound of eminent domain. But I can tell you, for any of my constituents that might be upset about the fact that we're doing this, I can show you 10 times as many people that are thrilled that this is happening, the people that are driving up and down Pine Tree Road and coming across George Ritchie Road. Mr. Bonds and I had the benefit of being up on that road again last week, dealing with some issues that came up with one of my constituents. So, again, I don't like eminent domain. I think it needs to be used judiciously and only as a last resort. And I think that's exactly what we're doing here. So, kudos to you.
Well, it's a good point, Richard. And this is a, this is a public safety matter to begin with. I can't tell you how many accidents have occurred at this property.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll second his motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bonds. Keith, one thing, once all this, what's the anticipated, you know, construction phase of this project?
We don't have final title to the other tract of land, too, but it's on the way. I'd say the plans are 90%. So, after we get the plans completed in about a month, get this issue taken care of. I don't know how long this issue might take care of. You have any idea, Robert?
An exact idea. It shouldn't take as long as a normal case because this really is being done more to clear up some title issues. The person who may own the property now may, there may be some title issues. And this really is to clear those up more than a, you know, a procedure, you know, a confrontation. It's not really like that. it's not really like that. So hopefully this will be fairly quick as condemnations go.
So we might be...
So on the original, on the original twenty-eleven bond election, what was the anticipated, you know, finishing of this project, you remember?
I, I can't remember. I think we had all of the intersections all in one, and we have four others that we're working on. We just take this one by itself because it was somewhat more complicated, but if we, if we go out to bids by the first of the year and, and able to award February or so, it's probably a ten-month project.
Okay. What, what does council think about maybe the first meeting of December, which will probably be our own meeting, our only meeting, about asking you to come back with an update on where we're at? I know we have those target dates and...
Sure, no problem.
But kinda give us in the community an update of where we're at with the twenty-eleven bond elections?
Be glad to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think Mr. Willard had something.
Thank you, Mayor and councils. I do have privilege tonight, we like to recognize outstanding employees for things that they have done on behalf of the City of Longview, and I have an award tonight that I wanna recognize Sally Reese. She's here, Sally, come on up, please. Mayor and council, as you know, Sally has been the court administrator for the City of Longview Municipal Court for a little over two years now, and as city council well remembers and others, municipal court was in really tough shape when Sally came in and took over as the court administrator, and quite frankly, our reputation throughout the state was not a good one, sad to say, and Sally and her team have come in and, of course, passed our audit last year, that was the first step, and I wanted to share with you, she has been awarded from the Texas Municipal Court Clerks State Association a distinguished service award recently in recognition of outstanding service and dedication by their twenty-twelve meeting. So she has, and her staff too, it's been a team effort, and Judge Merriman as well has been instrumental in that, have really elevated the service of our municipal court, and I'm really proud of Sally and what she's accomplished, and I wanted you to be part of that tonight. So Sally, congratulations.
Good job, Ms. Sally. Okay, items of community interest. We'll start over here with Mr. Sims.
Mayor, I want to thank Councilman Wayne Frost for the stand he took last week. As all of you know, Ed Vanos is a very dear friend of mine, he helped me and helped Joe during our illnesses, and I thought that we needed to take a stand. We don't just arbitrarily kick someone off of a board and replace them, even though, well, we just don't do it. So there again, I wanna thank Wayne for taking this stand, that he did.
Okay, Mr. Garrett?
Youth, excuse me, youth open basketball registration deadline is November first, youth church basketball registration deadline is December second. Call two three seven twelve seventy. Is that you, Ms. Hill?
Okay, all right.
The next one is, the city of Longview needs nine-one-one dispatchers. They are now taking applications. You can apply at longviewtexas.gov, or you can call two three seven twelve twenty. So anybody needing a job as a dispatcher, we got some available positions.
There you go, Garrett, looking for the application. Ms. Williams?
I wanna remind everybody, go out and vote, your vote is your voice. Again, I say your vote is your voice, and I want to thank members of the community who are constantly in contact with me regarding issues that are affecting our community. It is a joy to serve in District Three and for the City of Longview as a whole, and I'd just like to also thank Keith Bonds, Laura Hill, probably forgetting a couple of other people, I'm constantly, I call Keith Bonds often, and I say, okay, are you ready for your weekly call from me? And so I would like to thank the staff for everything that they do in support of making our community a better place for everyone. And today, I'm, I'm not gonna say it all, Councilman Manley, but we took a bus ride today, and boy, did we have a great time, so shout out to Longview Transit. If you've not ridden the bus because it's something foreign to you, because a lot of times we stay in our own worlds, and we don't take the time to understand the needs of others, or what they may be going through, or how it may have a positive impact on their lives, take a ride on Longview Transit. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, Mr. Frost?
I don't have any.
Mr. Manley?
I got a couple of things.
Where'd you go riding on the bus?
Well, I'm gonna tell you.
You tell us, I wanna hear that.
But there's a couple of things I wanna say first, I'd like to first of all say congratulations to my lovely bride, our twenty-sixth wedding anniversary is today.
Oh, God bless her.
And we're gonna run out and have a, break some bread over with the folks at Bearins tonight after I leave here, so celebrate our anniversary. Also wanna recognize the Spring Hill Girls Volley, Girls Volleyball Team, who has finished their season undefeated in district and headed to, to hopefully deeply into the state playoffs, so good luck to the Spring Hill Girls Volleyball. And I also say, vote, get out and vote. As a Marine, it's one of those things that you, you talk about when you, when you wear the uniform. Mr. Ewing's is a, a major in the Air Force, so I have to salute him when I walk by, 'cause I was just a captain, so I don't like that very much, but we all, we all, as military people, take a, take a lot of pride in what we do and defending our country and, you know, defending the right to vote is something that's so incredibly unique in all the world, the fact that we can vote the way we do. Lastly, and I'd probably say most importantly, I wanna thank the folks at Longview Transit for the invitation to come ride around town with them today. Ms. Williams and I represent the city. I wanna thank Tekeeta Murphy, James Torres, and Damia Pentecost, three of the executives or the managers there, and also Mr. Ray Ward, who was my driver, and I got in trouble 'cause I stood up on his bus while it was moving, so he tried to get me to come back and watch his bus for him when I, we were done, but I had to go on. But I wanna tell y'all something, this Longview Transit's been in business for ten years, it is a jewel, it is an asset to our city, something that all of you would be very, very proud of, and I'd feel completely comfortable riding it myself, my, my kids, my wife by herself, it's safe, it's clean. Our folks are professionals, they really know what they're doing, and I just greatly enjoyed it. So kudos to Longview Transit, and you have a big supporter in Richard Manley now.
Thank you, bud. You know, that, that whole transit program, I'll never forget, when it came before the council, and it was one person alone that made that happen, Ms. Sidney Bell Willis, God rest you, so. Okay, multicultural festival is Saturday, oh, I forgot about you, oh, I didn't, surely didn't wanna, sorry, Sidney.
You were a captain in, yes, in, I was actually in the, my Lord, the, the major.
Mr. Ewing?
Mr. Ewing, Mr. Ewing, I was many, many years back, I was in the same unit Mr. Ewing was in, and he's a major now, but I was an airman over at National Guard over at Grand Prairie, so.
She's got some both.
Yes, yes, that's right. Just one question, Ms. Hill, the people that live in Town Lake, if they wanted to get a diagram or a little better idea of this proposed parkway through their area, who would they talk to? Okay, just, just call you, just call City Hall and ask for Laura Hill. Okay, thank you.
You know, city, what, what you might wanna do, they have a great neighborhood...
They do.
Facility, they have a meeting facility, so as this would move forward, you might wanna organize, meaning to have the residents come out and kinda look at, see, and, and ask questions. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, multicultural festival is Saturday, October twenty-seventh, at the Longview Exhibit Building, from ten till five. More information, call PIP at nine oh three two three seven, oh, that's Partners in Prevention, I did it again. Call Partners in Prevention at nine oh three two three seven ten nineteen. The Longview Fire Department block party is this Saturday, October twenty-seventh, from ten AM till two, located behind the Central Fire Station on two hundred South Green, South Center Street. Call Lesha Robinson at nine oh three two three seven eleven nineteen. The Renew Longview Initiative is coming to Longview and making improvements in Longview neighborhoods surrounding Birdie Park. From November fifth through the seventeenth, a coordinated effort will take place throughout the neighborhood. The project includes assistance from the Longview Police Department, Public Works, Environmental Health, Parks Department, Fire Department, Pine Tree I S D, and the Go West Longview Group. Volunteers are invited to help, especially on November tenth and November seventeenth. For more information, visit longviewtexas.gov. And on the matter of going out to vote, ladies and gentlemen, it's, best time in the world to vote is now, early vote, and I went this morning to courthouse, and, well, matter of fact, Mr. Frost went in front of me, you got your deal, so very, very neat to do, and we have some major decisions to make in this country, and don't complain if you don't vote. Meeting adjourned.